Zoning Commission for the Town of Andover. First up is roll call and seat the boulders and I guess I'll, I'll start out by saying that I think last Friday. Or Thursday, you got a email from Steve Nelson, who is experiencing some unexpected personal issues in his life right this minute and he is having to resign from the planning and zoning commission. So he will not be with us for the foreseeable future. I, I hope that at some point he's able to rejoin the commission, but for now he, he did submit his letter of resignation and we'll be working on that. So for roll call here tonight, I see Anne Creme is present. I see Scott Bresson is here. Leeann Hutchinson is with us. Kevin, I think I saw you. Kevin's here. And I am here. Susan England and Anne Marie are, are both absent tonight. So Kevin, I will be seating you for Steve Nelson tonight. The next up on the list is addition and changes to the agenda. And I have no additions or changes. Anybody else have anything that we need to add to the list?
Jed, would it be appropriate to add an item to discuss filling Steve Nelson's spot?
I'll do that under commission discussion. I don't plan to fill that spot tonight. We've got a, we'll talk about it when we get down to item nine on the agenda.
Okay, I do have one other item. It's not an addition or change, but this seems like the appropriate time. There seems to be a few issues with the website. So if you went on earlier today, for instance, and looking for the agenda along with the agendas, it wasn't there. It was on the calendar. You can find it through the calendar, but not agendas. And I ran across another. I was told that it was just a it's an issue that will be worked out. It's not a posting issue. It was a systemic issue of some sort. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Given that there's no changes to the agenda, then we'll move on to public comment and does anybody have any comments on anything that is not on the agenda that they would like to make at this time? Hearing done, we'll move down to new business. And the first item up is receipt of application and set public hearing for the property of Tyler Rickett, Rickard on 166 Route Six. The applicant seeking a special permit for a home occupation. Tyler, I, I see you're here. I, I apologize to the commission for not sending the stuff out. It is posted online. Took us a little bit to, to get it there, but I, I see that we've got plenty of information there. So at this point, I consider the application received as of June 18th and I would make a motion that we set a public hearing to discuss the application for our next meeting, which is on July 16th.
Okay.
I'm looking for a second to that motion.
I could not, Jed.
Okay.
Meeting on July 6th?
16th.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I got off your agenda there. I, I didn't look.
Okay, I heard 6th. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Nope, it's the 16th. So our next regularly scheduled meeting. So we've got a motion. We've got a second. Any discussion on that at this point? Okay. Hearing no discussion. A call for a vote. Ian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leeann?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Can I vote aye as well? The motion passes five zero zero. We'll hold a public hearing before our regular meeting at the next, next meeting. And Tyler, if all goes well with the public hearing and, and the review of the application, I would expect we would be able to act on, on that application at our next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Very good.
Any questions for us, Tyler?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
You too.
Next, that completes new business. Next up is old business and the first item is to set public hearing date for the gravel pit Route Six, number 517. The Jim, you want to brief us on your review of the application that was submitted?
Well, I mean, the application appears to be complete. I did have a conversation with Chris Bell. I sent him some correspondence. Spoke to him this afternoon. He's well aware of what's going on and I believe he, he indicated that in all probability, Mr. The applicant's attorney will be there representing him. Chris no longer attends meetings due to retirement and Bill Genovese will in all probability not be there.
Okay.
And I, I did indicate that I would be getting back to him after I've had a chance to review a few things, but, but pretty much I think it's all, it's pretty clear from here. And he's well aware of, of what the commission's concerns are.
Okay. Did you direct him to any of the applicable points in the regulations that he might want to take a look at?
I did.
Okay. Very good. So with that in mind, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the gravel pit restoration plan at 517 Route Six to take place prior to our next regular meeting on the 16th of July.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Anne. Any, any discussion at that point?
Jed, this is Leeann.
Yep, go ahead, Leeann.
Um, just to be clear, you mean, when you say prior to the next regular meeting, you mean on the same day, just prior to the commencing the regular meeting, right?
Right. We will have, you know, and I've got to, I've got to sort out the best way to do two different public hearings. But we'll, we'll sort that out between now and then. And I would expect that, that our get together will start at seven o'clock. We'll hold the two public hearings. After those are done, then we'll move on to the regular meeting and, and do whatever it is that we need to do at that.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, and Jim and I did, did have a conversation with the attorney leading up to tonight and, and given that the application was essentially complete, he, he felt we were obliged to, to hold a public hearing, hold a discussion in that forum and then take whatever action that the commission needs to following that. So.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's all I'll say about that. I want to make sure that I, I try to remain squeaky clean on, on that particular you know, matter, especially because I do still expect the convoluted path to the finish line, however that might be. So that got through most of the, the actual business here pretty quick tonight. Next item up under whole business is the discussion on the plan of conservation and development. And John, I'll turn it over.
You didn't vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Leeann. Yep. And and Marina always faithfully notes in the minutes whenever we don't second or, or vote on a motion. So I, I really appreciate you backing me up there, Leeann. We'll call for a vote on scheduling a public hearing on July 16th. Ian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leeann?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero. Thanks again, Leeann.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we're going to turn it over to John for discussion on the vision statement for the plan of conservation and development.
Okay, thanks Jed. So hopefully people received and got a little bit of a chance to review. I'm going to go ahead and put it on the screen because I will ask for input and then we can kind of mark it up together. Let's see, Android app working. And hopefully people can see that. So this is basically based on input that we, that, you know, from, from numerous prior meetings when all of you were sort of talking about things that are, things that are important about protecting in Andover, things that are really important, sort of looking forward as well as input from the prior plan and the, and the, and the community survey. So I'm going with your indulgence just to read it through. It's not really that long. I'm just going to read it through, ask you all to sort of listen, and then I'll, I'll throw it open to the, the group for comment. And when I do, please do not fear of hurting my feelings or, or anything like this. This is absolutely your statement. So we want to make sure that we get everyone's sort of honest, honest feedback. So this is the, the draft vision statement. The Town of Andover Planning and Zoning Commission in developing this update to the 2015 Plan of Conservation and Development is guided by a deep commitment to conserving and enhancing the historic rural atmosphere of Andover and by the intent to promote actions and policies that will encourage a safe, connected and sustainable community where wider opportunities are available to all. A fundamentally rural agricultural nature has defined the community of Andover for centuries, and it continues to be a critical component of the town's self-identity as it faces the next decade. Making investments in conservation of forests, farms, trail systems and open spaces will help reinforce this rural tradition. At the same time, certain elements of change must be acknowledged and used to guide appropriate growth. An aging population, limited housing and commercial diversity, continued needs for infrastructure investment and a changing climate also demand proactive plans and active responses. We envision an Andover that provides housing, educational, recreational and civic opportunities that maintain the community's high quality of life. We envision an Andover that welcomes a wider variety of new residents and households, ensures opportunity for residents to thrive throughout their life stages, encourages broad participation in community life and safeguards the integrity of our natural agricultural and historic resources through sustainable conservation. We envision economic development that takes advantage of major transportation and trail corridors and is scaled to fit within the spirit and pace of Andover. We envision civic investment that acknowledges and plans for a changing climate and the need for increased equity of opportunity for current and future residents. The next decade in Andover will continue to enhance the civic campus on both sides of Route Six as the heart of the community while integrating thoughtful development in surrounding areas and throughout the town. Strengthening safe and vibrant connections among all areas of Andover balanced with conservation of natural and cultural resources are essential to the realization of this vision. So it's, it's a mouthful. It's a lot on one page, but I would, I would welcome your, your reactions. And edits.
And I've already provided some initial feedback on this. And so I'm looking, I will, I will provide that feedback again, but I'd like to hear from the other commission members before I do that.
I, I like what is there. I think I know that many people tend to think of this as agricultural, but it's not really that much, but having agricultural nature for centuries, that, that fit. Today you look around town, there's not that many farms. There's more farms in other towns around us. So I think this is well written. Because it just has some farms and you're interested in keeping them, but I really like the elements of change that must be acknowledged and uses the guide for appropriate growth. I think that's good. And I think that the other, the, the parts that you envision, especially like the Andover welcomes a wider variety of new residents and households and ensures opportunities for residents. And I think it's all really good. I really wouldn't change much. I just wanted to point out the things I really liked.
Thank you, Anne. One thing, as I was reading through, and, and it's very different, reading aloud and just sort of typing it onto a page. I feel like the second we envision statement is a little too long and covers too much. And I don't know what, what this is what I would propose. Would, would be life stages, period. And then here. So it sort of separates those two thoughts. Anyway, that's, that's, that's a relatively minor change, but I think that's anyway, okay. As I'm, as I'm seeing it, I kind of like it better this way, shorter statement.
I agree, Jed.
I feel like it, I feel like it makes sense because they really are kind of two separate thoughts. One is like a population and the other one is like a behavior of the population.
Yes, thank you. I, yeah. Okay, sorry. But other, other thoughts.
Leeann?
Yes, I think it's, I, I also think it's worded well and, you know, covers the main elements of the, you know, the survey itself and the things that we were looking to address when we started.
Scott?
John, what is it? The last we envisioned, the climate, changing climate, environmental climate?
Um, yeah, that's, that is what I meant. Yeah, a, a, a sort of a nod to, to, yeah, climate change.
Yep. Good, good comment, Scott. I think
I, I mean, I'm happy to rephrase it. That's to make it clearer. Like, you know, it, it's not the, it's not the, you know, the political atmosphere, the political climate of Andover is not the, you know, the social atmosphere. It's, we are talking about the environment. I would, would a changing, well, I don't know, environment is sort of the same multi-use word as, as climate. I don't know. Is there, you, you feel like there's a better way to say that, Scott?
Not sure. I just keep rereading it.
I mean, I feel like it should be something like supporting, like supporting measures to like mitigate or something, something about climate change instead of planning for, you know, right now, this is like reading like you're planning for climate change, not like taking measures against.
Seems like if you have that, you almost put in what, what measures you're going to be.
I know, I know. And I don't want to get specific.
Something like that. Takes measures to address a changing climate.
And I think you could put weather climate in there to just specify it. It, it kind of, you know, weather and climate are almost the same, but it certainly lets everybody know we're not talking about the political climate or social climate or any of that.
Yeah.
I, no, I don't know.
I feel like it would be weird if weather wasn't there.
It, it is. That's, that's a little bit awkward. I, but I think there's something we can probably figure out there. I'll, I'll clarify that.
Kevin, did you have any other comments?
Uh, no, again, I don't, I don't really want to piggyback off of Anne. I like the, I like the general message that the whole thing is conveying. I don't really have any specific, I don't really have any specific notes on anything.
Okay, the, you know, the couple of comments, couple of areas that I was struggling with through here and, and I'll start with the, the last we envisioned. I do think there are some things we need to address to support the changing climate. Like the increased rain events, you know, and that sort of thing. But when, when it continued on and the need for increased equity of opportunity for current future residents, I had a hard time understanding what that might be because, you know, we, we're working to increase the recreational opportunities for everybody. We're making a small playground. We're, you know, for the young folks, we got the pickleball courts coming in in addition to the soccer field and the drag. So, you know, and, and we talk about increased opportunity for housing. So I, I was just, if somebody were to ask me what kind of opportunity are we talking about? I don't have a good answer for that. And, and certainly, you know, we had talked about the fact that we are not going to have a lot of economic opportunity because there's not going to be a lot of jobs coming to Andover. That's not what Andover's probably ever going to be. And so I struggled with that last line and
Increased recreation opportunities?
Well, but didn't we cover that? Yeah. And we covered that in the very first envision.
Yeah.
Or maybe we need to expand it up there to, so my second comment, and, and you could think about this one for a minute. And I like, I like all the things on that first envision statement. But I thought there was a significant difference in our success in the different areas. Like, do we have a variety of housing for everybody? No, we got all these single family homes. So that was an area I didn't think we were doing so good in. Educational, I thought the school is probably, you know, if there's if it's not the top thing for Andover, certainly it's number two, right behind the open, safe, you know, rural environment that we all enjoyed to, to get here. So I struggled with and, and we're going to work on, on making all those good for everybody to maintain them. But you know, the housing, I think we've got, that was the one that I thought we haven't done a very good job on yet. And, and we got a lot of work, just like every other town in Connecticut. Scott worked on that one. So in, in that's not taken away from the fact that, you know, I, I think we've got a really good product here. I, I just
I, yeah, no, to, to build off of that, Jed, I think, you know, when I, when I had written the increased equity of opportunity and I, and I tweaked the language a little bit following your initial comments last week, but I, when I, when I, when I think about this in terms of, in, in terms of Andover's context, it really is largely things like education, housing, recreation. And perhaps that, that is already covered by the first two really in, in vision statements. So the first one, we say housing, educational, recreation and all civic. And then the second one, we specifically call out residents. We call out residential opportunities. So it's possible we don't need the last one.
Yeah.
And, and you, you might add on that first one, the increased equity of opportunity for housing, education, recreation and civic opportunities. Now, I think we're doing everything we can do educationally. Uh, we've got lots of civic opportunities for everybody. Anybody who wants to participate in the town has more than enough opportunity to do so. Recreational, I think we're, we're getting that, again, I go back to, to housing, but we certainly want to make all those things good. So we have that high quality of life. So, yeah, I would be happy to just have the last envision be addressing the changing climate. And put period there. Yep.
Maybe that one about changing climate could be said, takes measures to address climate change because everybody knows climate change has got to do with the weather.
It's, it's, yeah, to use the actual.
Yeah, that's a good, good point, Anne. The last, the last we envisioned that I think you know, we talked about in the last concluding paragraph, but maybe we need a we envision is the the complete streets plan, you know, when we're trying to right this minute or transportation, well, 10 years ago, our transportation system was designed pretty much for cars. You know, Eric's been working with a bunch of other folks to try and, and make it so that walkers and bikers and joggers can, can, you know, go throughout the town. And, and I think that's been, you know, that's been very successful. We're, we're making good progress on it. There's still some stuff to do. But I think that's one of the things that we're trying to make equitable is the ability for people to get around the town with more, more means than just a a, a car.
Yeah, I, so um, so I highlighted it below and that. So I think, you know, that the complete streets concept is what I intended with the statement in the last paragraph about strengthening safe and vibrant connections among all areas of Andover. I, I don't, I mean, I wonder if, does that belong as a separate envision statement or should I just clarify it where it is and, and, and maybe try to incorporate that phrase?
My, my initial thought was that it needed its own. I, I, I just, I don't know, you know, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like, maybe just take that all. Because the next, the next envision would be a safe town. Then you got that right before the, the complete streets thing. So maybe if you took safe and vibrant connections, complete streets and put that as an envision. But I think, you know, it, it would be nice to be able to bike from one side of Route Six to the other, to the recreation things and all that kind of stuff. And, and we're headed that way. I, yeah. And, and I think we want to make sure to have the focus on continuing that effort.
Okay. So I could, I could rephrase this up to a separate re-envision statement, a safe and vibrant Andover and, and, and structure it to include the, the concept of safe streets and, and the, the different sides of Route Six.
Yep, make, we're working to make it so that everybody can get around town with bikes, walking, or something. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I like that.
Because I know Eric would like to see his old little complete streets chapter in the POCD before all said and done. And and you had made a good comment, John, about how our last one didn't have, you know, the, the strong linkage in all areas there, but.
Yeah, okay. So I, that, yeah, I think putting this together as a, as a connecting statement, talking about the civic campus, both sides, complete streets, something in there. I, I, yeah, I I'll, I'll think about it and maybe. I'll, I'll think about it and maybe have something up as we continue the discussion, but, yeah.
And I guess, uh, as, as we talk, you know, the other. The last comment I will make in, in, and it's got nothing to do with the quality of the, the product provided. We, we talk about, uh, you know, some good things. But I would think there would be a couple of things about Andover that we would say we wanna maintain Andover's excellence. You know, we don't want our school to be mediocre. We want, right this minute, I think we have an excellent school, and we probably wanna keep it that way. You know, and, and I like the excellent environment, now, I'm looking for, you know, more thoughts from. Other commission members, do we have that strong enough when we talk about maintaining the high quality of life, or are there? You know, should we point out what we think is excellent about Andover? Maybe we don't need to. I know you got thoughts on that, Ian.
Um, as, as, if I can, I don't wanna interrupt that, that section, but what I, what I. As we spinning this forward a little bit, Jed, to respond to your, to your thought, is, um. Looking sort of forward in terms of a structure of establishing goals and a little bit more narrative in the plan itself. My thought, my initial thought was to actually use the we envision statements, which are now six of them. As set, sort of setting off sections of the plan itself. So that one section would essentially cover the first we envision statement. Talks about housing, education, recreation, civic opportunities, and the quality of life. And then in that section would be an opportunity to. You know, sort of, uh, commend ourselves on, on the high quality of our educational institutions and, and continued d- dedication to, to maintaining them. But, you know, I, it. And, and, you know, and, and then similarly, you know, the residential section we envision in a wider variety of residential opportunities would be. A, a chunk, and then, you know, complete streets would be a chunk, economic development and transportation would be a chunk. Based following the, the we envision statements, and that, and that, that would. If that works, be the opportunity to kind of, you know, brag on the schools and redouble our commitment to that and that sort of thing.
Would it, would it be too bold to say in that first envision statement ended up with the community's excellent quality of life? You know, I kinda like leaving here.
I, I don't have a problem with the word excellent, that's.
Yeah, I, I mean, to me, that, uh. That hits that, uh, for me, uh, I, I just think. You know, we, we got it really nice here, you know, I kinda like it. I don't wanna lose it.
When I think about what I'd like to see in Andover, I was just thinking today about something like a bank. And maybe, you know, we've already got the, up in Coventry, the Walgreens and the CBS. But it'd be nice if we had some of those kinds of things, you drive through other towns and it's. Single one, um. I envision, my envisioning what else would be like to have a few more. Of these types of things that are basic to a town. I don't know if we can get anything groceries, but a bank, doctor's office, um. Stuff like that, I would put that in there, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Anne, because you, you, you end up, you end up leaving the town for everything. You always have to go, it seems like you always have to go somewhere else, uh. You know, unless you're getting food from Andover Pizza, um, you know, it, it just seems like everything is. It, every, it, everything encourages you to go elsewhere to get. Like Anne said, food or groceries, or just like simple things that you need to run out and grab, um. You know, I don't, I don't know if we have the population to support places to, to eat or go out, um, but it would be kind of. Nice to see that as an option, I don't know how it would do, but, um, you know, unfortunately, there's like no, you know, without the development of some. Campus where I guess we're calling it on, on some area of Route Six, that's like a little bit of a nicer area to pull off to and whatever. That doesn't really, it just doesn't really encourage people to, A, I think, wanna set up a business like that, or. Doesn't really w- wanna encourage people to stop if all you have is the Andover Plaza on Route Six right now. Which I know that's like, you know, I know that's what we're trying to develop, but, uh, I guess. All summarized, I agree with what Anne is saying, that it seems like you always have to leave to get the things that you want, instead of trying to bring people in.
But I don't know that you have to leave very far, and again, I'm just.
No, no, I'm not saying you have to leave.
Yeah, cuz you, you got Ted's, if, if you're looking, you know, Andover used to have a grocery store, I understand, down there. Maybe it was at Andover Plaza, it was before my time, but, you know, there just wasn't enough. Demand there to make it viable, and, and now we used to have a little mini mart there, and that's gone out of business because of, uh. Dollar General filling that need if you're looking for something quick. I did, I, I used to, uh, do my banking at the Stop and Shop in Willimantic, I go groceries, Willimantic. Get to go to the bank there, uh, and I was thinking today, you know, that particular bank. There's nothing, there's nothing around for me to do my banking anymore close by, and so, uh. You know, I agree with the, the comment on the bank, I don't know that we'd be able to do enough business there or not, but certainly, uh. Uh, it would be nice to have one of those, I haven't figured out where I'm gonna go primarily do my banking, uh. One of my kids lives in Colchester, so I stop at the M and T Bank down there when I'm, you know, going to visit him or whatever, but, um.
Also was a bank in Andover. Savings Bank of Manchester, right, at the same plaza. In the sev- in the seventies.
And it would be nice to, uh, to see something like that here, but. Again, it's, it would have to be a good business decision, and, and I, I'm not, uh, smart enough to talk on that.
Right, so, what I, to, to Anne's, to Anne's point, and I think that's, that's a really important one, um. Uh, what I would, what I would, and I, I'm avoiding using the word envision, what I would think, uh, we would do. Organizationally is, I, and I think that this discussion we're having about the types of businesses that would be welcome and, and useful. And needed in town fits into this sort of the economic development statement, um. And we could probably flesh it out a little bit about the, you know, the types of businesses we want, but I would think the detail. About the types of businesses, banks, grocery, additional restaurant options, whatever, would then be in the, in the more substantive. You know, meat of the plan, you know, that, that, the, the vision being left a little bit more broad, but I, I guess maybe. Anne, you're sort of the original commenter on this, this, does something like this. Uh, referring to the, 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 the needs of the community, is this what you, you intend to sort of bring into the vision, or? Or should we sort of, sort of stick a pin in, in that more specific stuff and, and deal with it when we get to the economic development part?
I guess, putting it in the chapter or section on economic development would probably do it.
Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, and, and again, yeah, I think that's a. I suppose it's a good thing that these, these vision statements are starting to. Kick off conversation about some more of the specifics, but I think, yeah, the specifics will, will come in, in future months.
What, what about putting something in there with our, you know, a pursuit of affordable housing? Continued pursuit of affordable housing or something like that, that. That's not, that's not we envision, but. I mean, my, the way I see sound of Andover now is, we're, the housing market might, may go, we may have houses. I would say in another fifty years, we might have another twenty houses, but the quality of life in Andover is very good, though. And, and there's more and more things going on in Andover, things, the quality of life and the things that are here. For the town are getting a lot better, but I don't see Andover. As a banking community, or a CBS, or a Walgreens, or anything like that, I think that we're always gonna go somewhere else. For those things, but we're, we are gonna have a, a excellent quality of life, we're gonna have things to do. There's biking, things for people to go to, and an excellent school, um. Haven't seen any change in fifty years, so.
So Scott, if we took that, uh, second envision line and said we envisioned an Andover that. Works to create more affordable housing so that we can welcome a wider variety of residence households, how about that?
I think, you know, critically, we really, you know, the rest of the stuff that's going on in Andover is pretty good right now. I think that the housing is a real problem.
I do too.
And think that, something that.
That's probably, you know, our biggest shortcoming, just like every other town in Connecticut, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We're disadvantaged, we don't have the old mill that we can turn into apartments.
Right, yeah.
I, I mean, yeah, and I think, do. Is it worth, I mean, is, is it worth specifically calling out, so I mean, we have the whole separate envision statement that really refers to. Residential life, um, is it, is it, do we want to actually go ahead and use the word affordable somewhere in there?
I think we should, and, and Andover that welcomes, uh. And, yeah, and you gotta, you gotta be careful because. You know, we're, we're not talking about low income housing, we're just talking about more affordable housing than, than what we currently have, but.
How about something like this?
Yep, but, uh, yeah, I think, uh. What do you think, Scott?
Yeah, I think. I wonder if we can put it in there that we're, you know, we're striving. To address. Affordable housing, some, something, and I mean, there's eight, eight of us here, we should be able to come up with something that. That's, that's one of our priorities, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so, so.
Yes, I agree.
As, a, a stronger, a stronger. Statement here, that. Something like strives to welcome, is that?
Strive to make housing more affordable to welcome a wider variety of new residents than that?
Is it, I mean, that's, that's fine, is that, is that the statement you had in mind, Scott, to, to?
Striving, striving to. Welcome, uh.
Striving to create more affordable housing, to welcome a wider variety of new residents.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. So we're. Really, yeah, that's what, that's what we need to be doing.
Yep, I agree. What's everybody else think?
And then, so do we wanna keep, do we, you wanna leave this, do you wanna leave the second affordable in there, or do we not need that now?
Probably don't need that.
Yeah, I think you could take that out.
Okay, I. I commend you on that.
So for, you know, for everybody here, are there any, any other big ticket items that we want a chapter on? That we. Don't have addressed here, and I think we've. I think we're hitting. Most, I guess if something pops up as we go through, we can, uh, you know, create another we envision later on, but I think that's, uh. That's, uh. Looking pretty nice.
So, um, what I will propose from this point then was, as I'll, I'll make some additional edits to this. Um, I'll send this out, um, shortly, and then, you know, in the, in the next day or so. Um, so people can, can see sort of the consensus vision statement, um, and then what I would, what I would propose, and we can see if this works. Um, is then sort of taking each, in we envision statement, and again, making that sort of a, a, a section of the plan. Um, we can sort of take these one by one, and we'll state, like, start with the, the first one, which is essentially broadly defined quality of life. Um, and, and start talking about. You know, uh, the, the, the specific things that make that up, and, and what are the ways to, way, the ways to continue to promote that. Prioritize that, invest in that, and, and we'll kind of build out the, the, the chunks of the plan in that, in that way. And I think, Jed, it would also, splitting these out would also inform. Uh, discussions with others, and I think, you know, certainly. Um, the, the we envision statement about economic development would be an opportunity to, to call in the Economic Development Commission to kind of. Go through some of their goals, some of the, um. Uh, you know, natural his agricultural historic resources, you know, bringing in the Conservation Commission to talk about some of those things. Um, and if there are other interest groups or, or stakeholders on the other sort of envision statements. We would wanna have those conversations at that time as well.
Should, should that, uh. Conservation envision statement be, is. Encourages broad participation in community life different? Enough from the conservation that that should be. A different statement, and, you know, what, what I thought broad participation in community life meant, uh. We got a lot of activities going on, a lot of, a lot of ways for people to have a say in what the town's doing.
And maybe, maybe that actually belongs, we, and we, we reference civic opportunities up here.
Yep.
Uh, and, and maybe that's duplicative and, and takes away from the strong conservation focus, that's, that's.
Yeah.
So if we did this.
So, you know, my, my goal would be that the Conservation Commission does their little piece there. The economic development does their little piece. Eric, uh, has already provided us with a little something for the complete streets, what he envisions. And then that gives, uh, you know, us a couple to, uh. To be leading on, which is primarily the affordable housing thing is, is where we really need to, uh. Try to get some traction. The community needs to get some traction, not just planning and zoning.
So, yeah, so actually, and so, so what this, what this is breaking into is. Broad topic areas, you know, the first one, sort of quality of life broadly defined, affordable housing, conservation, economic development. Uh, essentially the climate change and, and maybe infrastructure and climate change, and then this one, which is sort of connectivity, complete streets. That sort of thing, um. Yeah, I think that makes sense, structuring it like that.
Okay, any, anybody have any other comments before we go on, I. I think, uh, we've had some good discussion on that, which is, uh, certainly what, you know, John and I were both hoping would happen there.
Yep, thank you. Alright. Alright, I will, uh, I will send out a revised statement, uh, in the next day or so. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, that completes all business, I'm gonna move on to, uh, item seven on the agenda, approval of the minutes. From the regular meeting of May twenty first. And I will make a motion, well, that, uh, I'm gonna ask for comments first, and then we can. Make a motion to, uh, approve as a minute, so, or does anybody have any comments on the minutes from the last meeting? My only comment, uh, would be under members excuse, we need to, uh, to list Kevin as not being at that meeting, uh. That was the only comment that I had on there. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes with the addition of, uh, Kevin being, uh. Excused from the last meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, was that, uh, you, Leanne?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Leanne, and, uh, any other discussion? During that, I'll call for a vote, Anne.
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Leanne?
Hi.
Kevin?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, and, uh, I vote, uh, I as well, the motion passes four zero one with Kevin Abstain. Next item up is administrative reports, uh, we'll start with, uh, zoning agent Jim.
Yes, thank you. I did send out at the last minute a updated light violation matrix. There are a few new, few new complaints came in, um, one involved chickens on Aspenel Drive and one was, one is on, uh, uh, debris on, on Lake, Lakeside Drive and, uh, I noticed it go out to Aspenel and what is going out shortly to, to Lake.
What's going on with the chickens?
Well, it's a, it's a property at the end of Aspenel which happens to be between, fall under, fall between three quarters and three acres, which is subject to a special permit. Over three acres, you're allowed as you, chickens as a user right. Um, under three quarters, there's no allowance for farm animals. So apparently chickens are, are running in the street according to neighbors and.
Is that, it's, Jim, is that, that's a fact that, that people with under three quarters of an acre cannot have chickens?
Correct.
I can't, you know, we went through that whole chicken thing and, I mean, they want everybody to have chickens.
Urban farming, I, I, I know, I.
And so I, it's hard for me to believe that somebody with three quarters of an acre can't have chickens.
I'll send you the.
There's, there's a, there's a big, uh, chicken, I have that booklet somewhere. And we changed our chicken regulations.
We did, and I'm looking at it right now, section twenty point five, where it says the purpose of this section is to permit as of right under circum- circumstances, keeping to a specific number of farm animals for personal use or consumption as an accessory used to residential use on parcels containing three quarters to three acres in the ARD. Homeowner may have up to eight total combination of chickens, guinea hens, turkeys, rabbits without the permit, without a special permit. So I think it's probably based on how many chickens the guy has, but I do see a lot of chickens as I go out walking around.
Right, everybody has chickens. They want everybody to have chickens.
Who does?
Well, the state does. Like they want everybody to have affordable housing in their house.
Yeah, okay. So it, it reads to me that if we've got a parcel three quarters to three acres, you can have up to eight as of right, if you're less than three quarters, you know, which is a pretty small lot.
Yep.
Can't have chickens or other animals, and if you got more than three, you can have more than that.
I'll, I'll revisit that. Anyway.
Because, yeah, I remember we went through the, the chicken, chicken regs.
Right, yeah. I, I don't remember them being that restrictive.
Well, eight chickens, there's a lot of chickens on a small lot.
Yeah.
I'll go back and, and check that, see, see what the story is.
Or they have to come in or, or they're locked, all the lots are smaller up there, Jim?
No, this particular lot is not. I'm gonna have to check, I honestly, I'm not sure where I came up with that. Well, you're keeping a firm, I mean, see section twenty three, that refers you to a special permit section.
Yep, I did. Uh, in twenty point five, you know, the first, it probably should be twenty point five A. A homeowner may have up to eight total of any combinations without a special permit.
Okay.
If you add something, if you add animals that aren't on that list of chickens, guinea hens, turkeys and rabbits, that's when you need a special permit, but.
Okay, and I did get another complaint on pig, but, uh, that it, I never found, I just, I only answered a few questions on it, never, it did not issue any sort of violation notice. All right, maybe hit that wrong. Okay, um, moving on. There's just, uh, continues to be a fair amount of activity. More and more complaints are coming in, um, based on, I think, the recent light, the adoption of the blade ordinance seems, the word seems to have gotten out. And, uh, people have stopped in and, and are making inquiries and such. Moving on. I did sit, submit a letter of retirement, uh, letters for resignation. I agreed to work with the town during course of a transition. So no effective date. I just, uh, have some personal responsibilities and some opportunities. It's time to move on. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
No questions, but I just acknowledge the fact that, uh, you know, we're gonna miss you Jim, that, yeah. Got a lot going on and, uh, I, I understand, uh, it, it wants you to go pursue those other opportunities.
Yeah, I, I do, um, appreciate the opportunity and I also appreciate all the time that you folks put in and, uh, put in for the town, behalf of the town.
So thank you, and, and you, you can't leave till the chickens are all under control.
I'll, I'll go back and.
Let load, let load the gravel.
I don't wanna get my information.
A few things that you have to take care of before you leave, Jim.
And I did, I have spoken to, uh, Mr. Grimaldi's attorney trying to work out a resolution to his unpermitted garage issue, um, but I'm, I'm, at this point, I'm waiting to hear from uh, his attorney. Had numerous conversations with her.
What, what is happening with that now?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to, to come up with a solution or, or I, I've pointed out the issues with, with, um, Grimaldi's attorney and, and I'm waiting to hear, to get, have a response from, for her.
What are the? What could be the expected? It's a good word that, uh.
Outcome.
Outcome, yeah, for that situation.
Well, one of the issues was involved the, it's, it's a garage, it's, I'm calling it a garage, he's calling, Mr. Grimaldi is calling it an accessory structure. It's more specifically called a she shed, and our language uses the term garage, um, or it, it, it's his key, um, structure that can, you know, be used for no more than two vehicles, we're talking lake zone. And there's a lot of room for wiggle room under that regulation and, uh, I'm, I'm waiting to hear. I did get some feedback from Brants a while back on it. I just soon hold off for the moment on that until I have, have all, all the, all my information.
Jim?
Yes.
Jim, this is a different Mr. Grimaldi than Keith Grimaldi, is that correct?
This is, yes, this is, um, Pat and Vinnie Grimaldi at three fifty seven Lake Road.
Okay, I just know what I, occasionally there's something in the paper about them going to ZBA, et cetera. I just mentioned it because I think it's Keith Grimaldi who was mentioned in our minutes last month, so I'm just making sure that.
Yeah, Keith Grimaldi owns the property that was approved as Rosewood Acres.
Right, that's on Route eighty seven.
Correct, yeah, it's Route eighty seven, Route six, Lindholm Quarters property.
Okay, I'm just trying to establish that they're two different, we happen to have two different Mr. Grimaldis with things that maybe in front of us or at least in passing.
Understood. Uh, what other issues I did indicated I would post some information on educational opportunities, and I did send it to, I did send the link for UConn, the UConn Clear Program to Kate, uh, for posting. So if, if you go to the, the PCC website, there's, there's a link with a lot of opportunities spelled out on there. Some really good, good programs, good training opportunities.
Sorry, what PCC website? Is this under Clear, UConn Clear?
Well, what I'm saying is on the Planning and Zoning Commission website is the link to the UConn Clear link.
Okay, so on our own website?
Correct.
Okay.
But all the commission members that have, you know, it, it's all great training, but the, uh, commission members are good for two years based on what we had done before. New members to the commission, I think, have a year to get some training done and, uh, and so, uh, one of the ways will be to attend the, uh, next March Connecticut Bar Association Land Use Training, uh, which I always think is pretty good and, uh, I highly recommend that for everybody here, but uh, you can get good portions of that if you, if you're trying to meet the requirement immediately to do that, I don't think anybody's in that position that they can't, uh, get their training done, and that would be Kevin who's, uh, you know, reinstated to the commission after the first of the year and will be bringing somebody else on board to, uh, replace Steve. Anything else Jim?
No.
Okay, thank you. John?
Okay, uh, just a couple of additional things, sort of rapid fire, um, we're still working on, uh, connecting with Keith Grimaldi, the potential developer Grimaldi, um, who is again putting his, uh, sort of incomplete, uh, development project on the market. Um, but we wanted to, to circle back with him. I've also reached out and made contact with a gentleman named Kier Shaw, who is the current owner of the Andover Plaza, um, to talk with him a little bit about, um, development in Andover and, and enhancements to his property. Um, you know, getting, getting his take as a, as a, um, commercial property owner as well as potentially, um, looking towards the future. I had some conversations with Jed and Eric about some state grants that might be available for, you know, facade improvement, for a commercial plaza improvement, that it's possible we could look at maybe a, a cost match thing where, you know, Mr. Shaw could make some improvements and the town could, could share some of the, or a grant could help us share some of the costs. Um, so I wanted to reach out to him for that reason. Um, I will note that, um, some good news, and I don't know how much Eric has shared, um, that, uh, the town did somewhat surprisingly get, um, a grant through the, uh, DEP Rec Trails, um, program. Um, we got, uh, I think around eighty thousand dollars to, uh, basically complete an engineering design for, um, a trail, a, a multi, multi-use trail to connect the town civic campus up across the town's, um, property to, um, the, uh, Hop River Trail, um, so it would be, and, and so if this was completed and the heat, the, um, the, the bike ped path was completed along Route three sixteen, it would actually create um, a whole loop, it would create multiple pathways to get from Town Hall and the school and the senior center to Hop River and Route six safely, and would also create sort of a loop trail, so we got, um, both, both halves of that funded, at least from a design standpoint, so that's great. Um, and then we are also, um, I believe a finalist, i- it hasn't been formally announced, but we, we received a notification from Senator Blumenthal and Senator Murphy's office that the town was basically shortlisted um, for a congressional appropriation, um, to um, purchase emergency generators, um, that would interconnect the, the buildings at Civic, Civic Campus there, the, the new senior center, the Town Hall and the Fire Station, um, with a, with a on-demand emergency backup generator. Um, so that's a couple hundred thousand dollars that, that would very much help, and so we're hoping to hear good news on it, it, it looks positive, but they haven't made final word. Um, on that.
John, that's not the four hundred and ten thousand dollar?
Um, I'll have to check, yeah, I thought it was a little south of that, but that, that sounds like it might be about right. I, I didn't think it was that much, but.
Um, it's on the shortlist now?
Yes. Um, it's, and I mean, and, and this is, this is, it's, I think it's basically a recommended project. Um, but these things all happen in congressional committees and so things can go sideways real fast, but, um, I, I'll say, you know, with putting on my amateur political scientist hat, um, this is an election year. Uh, and everyone's looking to, to, you know, bring home the figurative bacon, so, um, I think, uh, there will be a lot of mutual approval of, hey, everyone gets, you know, everyone gets projects to bring home to their districts, so I, I suspect, well, you know, the incentives are in place to, to have a successful, uh, application around here, but, but that's where we stand. That's what I got Jed.
Okay, thanks Sean. In, from an inland wetlands water course, uh, commission perspective, uh, nothing new to report there. That brings us up to commission discussion and, and we mentioned, uh, Steve Nelson submitted his letter of resignation. My, my thought was that I would try to get one of the, uh, alternates that are currently on the board to, uh, to take that position. I have to, uh, the thing that I've got to go take a look at is when I let the, the town clerk Carol know about the opening and she was putting something in the River East and, and letting the political parties know. That's probably going to reference the regular opening. And so what I really am looking to do is, you know, have one of the alternates fleet up and fill the hole with the new alternate, but I'll go, uh, you know, work on flushing out the details on how to make that work smoothly, but that's what I'm looking at doing and, and, uh, we'll start working on that at the next meeting here. Any questions on, on that particular issue? Okay. Yes, Leanne?
Um, Carol might have mentioned this to you and I haven't looked at it in a long time, but, um, I think there's a timeframe. I want to say, I know we have two selectmen here, I don't know if they've done this recently, but I think there's a maybe sixty days that we have to fill a vacancy ourselves. And there's no reason to think we'd go beyond that, I'm just bringing it up. And then I, I want to say it's sixty days, and if for some reason we didn't, then I think it goes to the Board of Selectmen. Does that sound familiar to people?
Yep.
That, that does sound like the way the charter is worded. I know, you know, the last time we had an opening and it took, uh, a long time to fill and the Board of Selectmen didn't want any part of trying to fill it, nor did I particularly want them to. nor did I particularly want them to.
Well, that's, that might was probably helpful at the time, but anyway, I'm just bringing it up now in case we do run up against it.
So the, the other thing, and I didn't see it in the charter, but but town clerk Carol said it's Connecticut law is that all three of our alternates cannot be from the same political party. And that's why when we had the election last fall, we couldn't have both Anne Marie and Patrick already joined the commission because that would have resulted with, with Susan, three Democrats and we weren't allowed to have that. So that's another piece that we've got to keep in mind. The way I read our charter was we tried to have a difference in, in the political parties, but that wouldn't stand in the way of manning the the commission. And so I've got to go make sure I know all the ins and outs as we head forward, but I do think we'll, we'll find somebody to fill that spot. At least I'm hopeful.
Now, do you have the requirement there that you can't have the three alternates being the same political party? What kind of requirements is it for the those of us on the main Planning and Zoning Commission?
So there's a percentage that, that we should have. And if you look in, in the state general statutes for a five-person commission, we need to have one person of the alternate party. So we could have four of one and one of the other, right now, pretty evenly split. We had the perfectly split commission, two Democrats, two Republicans and an independent. Till Steve resigned as the independent, but whoever we get coming into the commission will be in good shape with those numbers wise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that's a commission discussion. The next item is miscellaneous. Any other?
Jed?
Yep.
Just while we're still in commission discussion, to talk about the gravel pit for a minute, if, can we invite Attorney Curdo to the public hearing? Just, you know, due to the, to, you know, what you said about, I forget how you phrased it, but just, you know, we the, the last one was so lengthy. Can we invite him so that he's in on the ground floor of the public hearing?
He, he has been invited and it's on his calendar to attend.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep. Anything else from anybody? Okay, miscellaneous, anything from anybody? Public comments from anybody in the public?
Can I be a public for a minute?
You can.
At some point in the future, I don't know when, but I, I think that we need to have a short discussion about the incident that happened on, you know, Pine Ridge. I don't know if we do want to have that conversation or we don't. What's your feelings about that, Jed?
Well, so I can't remember if it's in our bylaws right now. I was, so I've been working on with Eric, the job description for the new zoning enforcement officer.
Yep.
In, in a, and there should be periodic inspections by both, you know, the wetlands agent and the zoning agent. And you know, I, I kind of thought that on Pine Ridge, the house was built and everything was done. I thought that was ancient history. So I was really surprised, you know, and and so, yes, we, we need to figure out, I guess, until certificate of occupancy is is finalized, we need to keep our finger in the pie there periodically and and we have, we have the right in our regulations to do that. It, you know, the property owners have to grant the town access to the property to make sure that things are, are going right, so.
This, this, this could happen again to anyone else.
It could. The other, the other thing, you know, that I've been a little disappointed that we, we didn't catch it earlier and do better on is, is the whole gravel pit thing, you know, it, it came to light as he was requesting his extension that he wasn't complying at all with, with what we had, what his plan was. And so so, yeah, that, that will be a part of what's going on and that just, you know, will, will need to be a priority somehow. And, and the world's full of things to do, you know, jockey, those. We need to help provide an input, but you know, it's really Jim's call on, on how he spends his limited resources.
Right, we all have too much to do.
Pine Ridge and the gravel pit were, were two examples of things that didn't go exactly as I had hoped.
Yep.
And one of the, you know, this, what we're doing is not nuclear power, but one of the things that we use to say, if you can't stand the answer in the end, make sure the proper controls are in place along the way to prevent it from happening. And I think a little bit of that in this case would have done that, but but to a big extent, the town has always relied on people making complaints to, you know, provide us where, where we're going to go off and look. Not the best way and we'll try to do better, but I, I can see how that one happened. I, I was quite surprised when I first heard about it. So, yep, good comment, something we need to do and and there's, I think there's, there's, there's a lot there in turnover that, you know, I'm concerned that we, we get right, but either there's a big things, things sometimes slip through the cracks. And that one surprised me. Any, any other public comment? Mission comment or otherwise? Okay, the date of the next regular scheduled meeting is July sixteenth. I guess I will go back and ask Scott or Ann, is there any news or insight on when you think the new senior center, community center is going to be open for business?
We're, we're gonna have a we're just hashing out the date, but it's, there's gonna be a grand opening. I think either the third or the tenth of August.
Of August.
Okay, so I was hoping that we'd be in the new building for the July meeting, but that might be a little too aggressive. But okay, very good. So my expectation at this point is the next regularly scheduled meeting will be Zoom. Well, once again, I thought, you know, I, I had logged in all the different methods to make sure the website worked and I was shocked that, you know, I come online and I said, okay, John must have another meeting he's going to. Nope, wasn't John. The Charter Commission will, will try to make sure that that
Yeah.
Doesn't
The Chair of the Charter Commission noted that he thought the town had multiple Zoom licenses.
Yeah, I think we do. I think we have two.
But apparently whoever set up the charter meeting must have logged in as Zoom at Andover dot, you know, CT. So I, you know, I don't know if they're two separate addresses, but, you know, they were both, when I logged in as, you know, Zoom at Andover CT, those were both, you know, listed for today. So they clearly weren't set up on different accounts.
Yep.
Yeah.
They were good enough to wrap it up.
So you can only imagine my dismay of trying to get the, the, ready for a meeting at seven o'clock and can't log into the sun, so. I guess I was spoiled with two good, good entries in a row there, John, and we'll have to be alert to, there's a new possibility for goofing it up, but next month will be
Yeah, we can, we can, we're innovators in that way.
Yep, yep.
August, you would like to have a meeting, the first meeting in the new building?
I would. I'm hoping that we can use that little room, not the big room, and that the acoustics in there work out good so that, you know, doing it in a hybrid fashion, it works out well acoustically.
That's gonna be the twentieth?
Yeah, I don't have my calendar out in front of me right now, but somewhere around there, yep. Okay, well, enough on that. The next one will be on Zoom on July sixteenth. And anybody got anything else before we move to adjournment? Hearing none, thank you all for the, the flexibility of of hanging in there to, to rapidly get online when the other group was done. It's, I make a motion, it's eight thirty to adjourn. Okay, Scott, you got the second on that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes five zero zero. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next month.